I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the School District of Waukesha, the full board meeting on December 10th, 2014. Welcome, welcome in person and welcome via the magic of television. I'd like to start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me in that.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brusink.
Here.
Steve Edlin.
Here.
Ellen Langill.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Yes.
Joseph Como.
Here. I did not hear from Patrick, and Patrick is normally here, so we're assuming he will be joining us a little later this evening. Sue, will you also verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Typically, at this time, we have bright lights, but this evening, we don't have bright lights presentation, so we'll move on to recognitions. And actually, the person who is receiving the award tonight couldn't make it. So, we're going to postpone that person being recognized until our January meeting.
That's good.
So, we'll probably have two employees of the month? And we'll just have to clarify December and January. We'll move on to our report from our student representatives from the great high school of Waukesha North High School. Maura Flanagan and Jared Estes will be giving that report. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Maura Flanagan. I'm a senior at Waukesha North. I'm involved in many things, but among those, marching band, newspaper, and the GSA.
I'm Jared Estes. I'm a sophomore, and I'm involved in Duco, drama, and tennis, really, but a lot more, too. And we're going to start off today with Jared talking about our academic decathlon team. Our academic decathlon is moving to the regional competition this week. The essay is Pilgrim at Tinder Creek by Annie Dillard.
And we are very proud to highlight North's ACT 30 group. Twelve students have received T-shirts on Friday because they, in recognition for receiving a 30 or higher on their ACTs.
The next is through orchestra. And on November 6th, the North High School Orchestra traveled to Marquette University to participate in the annual orchestra festival. Sixteen schools orchestras from southeastern Wisconsin region participated in the festival, where orchestra, where the orchestras performed pieces that they prepared and conductors from other universities listen, critique, and offer positive and constructive feedback to help students improve on their performance. The Waukesha North Orchestra will be hosting a holiday concert on Tuesday, December 16th, at 7:00 PM at the high school auditorium with a mix of traditional classics and newer standards. Immediately following, we will also be hosting a Culvers Night at the Culvers on Grandview.
North has also received a congratulations from the Wisconsin School Music Association as our marching band has won its 13th state championship. We also competed in the Grand National Championship in Indianapolis to cap off our Beneath the Midnight Star show to commemorate our four years of our marching band.
Next is our drama department. Our fall show was Creatures, and it was two one-acts combined. And we had a really good turnout. It was 100-plus people every night, which is a lot for a show. And then, the winter musical is Catch Me If You Can, and it's going to be performed in February.
We are pleased to report that the North girls cross-country, girls swim, girls volleyball, and the football teams won the sportsmanship awards from the Classic Eight for this fall season. Winter sports have officially started. Our wrestling has had a successful start against CMH with multiple pins. Both basketball teams played a tough non-conference open to the season and are off to a great start. Boys swim and dive hosted the Compass Meet, composed of six total teams, and performed very well. Cheer and dance are both entering their competitive season and previewed intentional performances at basketball games. The hockey team hosted Bayport this past weekend and played very well. We also are pleased to say that the Goodwill Fall Hall final numbers are in. We ranked number six with 11,962 items. This was the most out of all of the Waukesha schools.
Next is, our key club is selling bandanas and magnets for junior Anna Snowpack, who has cancer in her knee. And Maura's going to pass some around. You can either pick a bandana or a magnet. And we're also hosting a Zumba for Anna event on January 9th from 6:00 to 7:30 in the North Commons. $5 for students and $10 for adults. And 100% of the proceeds are going to the Snowpack family.
A big one. I'll take that. I'll put that at my door. Thanks.
What time is Zumba?
Thank you.
I'm Zumba.
It's 6:00 to 7:30 on January 9th.
AM?
Okay, I'm a cancer survivor, so I'll put this under the refrigerator. Thank you.
It is, well, you can go to Waukesha North, and then you can go to the administration, and I'm sure that they'll be able to give it to the Snowpack family.
Thank you.
How nice.
Thank you for those.
We would also like to briefly touch on our shirts. We are wearing our principal's advisory shirts. There are 10, about 10 students who are affiliated with this program, and we meet about once a month to talk with our principal, Ms. Landish, about things that are going on in our school to give her updates and things that we think that could do better within our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions might we have? Ms. Baumgart.
I've got a question. I just love the tagline on the bottom of your shirt. Chief Information Officers, I think that's.
And Jared's taller, so he can turn around and show you the back.
Oh. All right.
Oh, cool.
Well, expanding on that, JL Squad.
Yeah. Yep.
So, what's it like to be a member of JL Squad?
It's pretty cool. We meet early in the mornings, and we get to talk about things that are bothering us or something that we have really enjoyed recently in our school, and things that we think that we could do better to help our school community or help other people that are in the community.
And you had an example of helping out Ms. Snowpack with.
Yes.
Isn't that's very kind-hearted and thoughtful, and you guys pulling together to really support, really support her. Mrs. Brusink?
Yes. I know that you're very, very proud of your high school, and you should be. And isn't it wonderful that your principal has established an avenue for you to share your voice?
It's really cool to be able to have a voice, because I've talked to some people at our school who feel like they don't have a voice, but because of this program, I can voice their opinions and their concerns, and the administration hears it and does what they can to help them.
You should walk around with a shirt on that says, "Ask me," and then you can, they'll tell you, and then.
We got a lot of questions today. Yeah.
Well, great, great. I just think it's wonderful, and thank you, Jody, for doing that. I wish I would have had a system like that when I went to high school. Thank you, and keep being proud. North feels good when I go there.
Thanks. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask what your plans are for next year.
Yeah. I have been accepted to Minnesota Twin Cities, and I am planning on going there. I am currently undecided, and I'm in the College of Liberal Arts.
Okay.
Mr. Edlin?
I just wanted to welcome Jared. This is your first time here.
Yes.
And you're a sophomore, I believe. You did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Go Gophers.
Yeah. Going Gophers, all the way.
Well, thank you, Maura, and thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Truly appreciate it. Appreciate the update report, and we'll see you probably in three months.
Thank you. See you then. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're at, we're at the part of the meeting where we listen to our citizens. We, as in the past, each individual will be limited to three minutes of time to speak in order to hear from our community. Barbara Brusink will signal the speaker at two and a half minutes in order to allow wrap-up of their comments. We expect that, we expect all speakers to honor the time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phones at this time. And we have one person signed up tonight, and that's Mr. Paul Reese. Would you like to come forward?
Hi, I'm Paul Reese. I'm going to speak tonight about, almost a year ago, you guys gave yourself a raise here, and the way it went forth is Dan Warren proposed it, and he proposed a dollar amount, and it went to committee, and after committee, it came back to the school board. And in doing this, it follows policy, how raises are done, so that the community has a chance to respond to, and object to, or support with what you're doing. So, you can't just come in here one night and give yourself a raise as much as you want. It's done to avoid that. But in doing so, when Dan Warren brought it back, when it came out of committee, and Dan Warren offered an amendment to raise it, now, he could have raised it thousands of dollars if he wanted to. There is nothing stopping him from doing it. Absolutely nothing stopping him. And the fact that it passed, seven, seven to two, shows that if it could have passed, anything could have passed, because there's absolutely no decency involved here. Because if it was respect for the taxpayers, it wouldn't have passed. And I stood up here, and I railed about this, and I asked that something be done. And I believe it was Karen brought something forward in the policy meeting, and it languished, and I've showed up at numerous policy meetings, and either they're not going on when they're, the day it says on the website, it's on some other day, or it's not going on, period. And so, I missed October's policy meeting, because I don't know when it was. I think I showed up, but it wasn't on the day that it's usually on. And it came up for a vote, and it was, it failed two to one. Ms. Madden and Barbara Brusink thought it was inappropriate. They offered no amendment. They offered no insight or help in passing it. They apparently think it's okay to amend things upward without giving the taxpayer a chance to respond to it. I am running for school board, and if I run, this will, I will get that through. I will try to bring this up again. And I also will seek to have that money returned that was amended upward. That is another thing I want to see happen.
Two and a half minutes.
I think it was ill-gotten gains, and I think it was, it just, it was just not a good thing to do to the taxpayers. It didn't show any concern for anyone else than yourselves. Thanks, Bill.
At this time, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board that didn't sign up? Okay. We'll move on to our minute approval. There are a couple of minutes for our consideration to approve. November 12th, 2014, there was a regular board meeting minutes. December 3rd, 2014, we had an executive session, and those two, two minutes are what we're looking to approve. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And is there a second to that?
Second.
Sent by Mr. O'Brien? Actually, he raised his hand before you, before you said anything, Bill.
Good job, Jared.
And I saw that. I saw that twinkling of the hand there. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, Dr. Langill.
Thank you. And it's not to be, you know, nitpick, but this was the 6 o'clock meeting, and I left at 7:00, so I think I was there at 6:00. It says I was excused, but, so I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong about that.
Oh, that's right.
But I was there till 7:00.
No, she was there, right.
Yep.
Yeah. So.
Was that the December 3rd? Okay, I just.
December 3rd.
Went from the notes I had. I wasn't there.
Okay.
But I'll change that.
Thank you.
And that is, that is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
So, with that, with that change, is there any other discussions?
Do it, man.
Sue, why don't you take the roll?
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Moving on to our communications section, Mr. Gray.
I have three letters this evening. The first is from Dave Sternig, who's the commissioner of the Classic Eight, and he's congratulating Waukesha West High School for winning the sportsmanship award this fall for girls volleyball. The second letter is also from, from Mr. Sternig, and he's congratulating Waukesha North High School for winning the sportsmanship award for girls cross-country and girls swim. And finally, the third, also from Mr. Sternig, is congratulating Waukesha South High School for winning sportsmanship awards in football, boys volleyball, girls volleyball, boys cross-country, and girls tennis. So, congratulations to all three high schools and all those teams and all those athletes.
And then Barbara Brusink will give an update on the Waukesha Education Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Como. 2014 was a very, very good year for the Waukesha Education Foundation and its fundraising activities. With an increase in the community involvement and continued successful events, we are nearing our goal of $1 million. The November Celebration of Excellence was a great event. There were 20 student grant projects that were showcased. 140 students provided special music performances, and two local bands opened and closed the program. In addition, Mayor Riley presented our Partners in Education Award to Dan Warren, our former board president, and Dave DeReemer, who is in charge of our planetarium, the White House of Music, and WellDown Manufacturing. And we extend a thank you to over 200 attendees who joined us in recognizing our students and staff and award recipients. Planning for the 2015 event is in progress. Our next event is the Strive to Thrive on April 18th at North High School from 8:30 to noon. The WEF and District Planning Committee continues to collaborate with Pro Health as a new partner in this event. Activities will include our Run-Walk, an expanded health fair, and various health screening opportunities. The Bob Duckett Memorial Golf Outing is scheduled for July 20th, so mark your calendars to be at the Legend of Merrill Hills. And the 2015 celebration will be held at West High School with a date yet to be determined. This is a Cusman Report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Moving along, we'll have our Safety Committee report given by Mr. Baumgart.
Yes, thank you. Safety Committee met this morning and reviewed the accident reports for students and employees, and there were no unusual issues this month. Next item, Joe Cook gave a thorough update on our crisis response plan that we've been working on. Plans to finalize it by January are on schedule, and I'll be giving a final report at that point. There are several next steps that we need to be completed before then, and we'll get that done. If you wish to see a copy, Joe will have one available in his department. Joe, have you got one with you?
I do have a draft copy with me with a bunch of work that's still left to do on it, so it will be available in the office.
Want to show them the size of it?
It will be a light read if you decide to stop up in my office and take a look.
Yeah. Point is, if you wish to see a copy, please stop up and see Joe, and one will be available in his department. It is a significant document, as you can see from the size of it, and more will be added to it as time goes by, but it will not be publicly available, as we do not want to release information that would be, why am I tongue-tied here? That would present a security issue with, you know, about where things are and how to, so anyway, it's, it'll be retained within the district. It's a dynamic document, subject to change as we move forward, and the Safety Committee and the additional committee that Joe has put together will be reviewing this on an annual basis, likely before the beginning of every school year. And last item on safety, last month, Ellen asked about some health concerns that have been raised about artificial turf, and Glenn did some research in this, and he sent a number of studies that have been presented, and I have four of those. I believed everybody on the board, and basically refuting any concerns for health issues. So, I think we're okay on that one.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
And?
Might as well write, roll right into the charter school update?
I will roll right into the charter school update. East High School. This is the new name for what was the Harvey Phillips School, and Barb, are you going to be covering that a little bit more in your CNI report?
Yes.
Yeah, so I guess I won't go into detail on that, just what's transpired. But we are now calling what was formerly housed at Harvey Phillips, we're calling it East High School. It is not the name of the building. It is the name of what is the charter school. It is still in the white rock, white rock building. Okay, further on, East High School, the students sat at a coin war contest to sponsor a family for the Christmas Clearing Council, an organization that helps Waukesha County families in need during the holiday season. Our goal was to raise $60 to $100. The generosity of these students raised over $400, and they were able to sponsor three children. Ambassadors from each program will assist in shopping to pick out toys and grocery gifts for the sponsored families, and we are very proud of our students. I bring this to the public attention here, because, again, I believe the kids that are involved in that program need to be viewed as really solid students. They've got their own issues, whatever they might be, but they do their job, and they really are into the, being committed to the community. Second school that I reported back, or that reported back to me, E-Achieve. Rick wanted to celebrate the fact that more E-Achieve students were on pace after 12, after the 12th week than ever before since we've been keeping records of such things. And furthermore, more students are on pace after, on pace after Week 12 than were on pace after Week 8, which means the jump between those, in that month, has even been greater. And very positive. And there's more information from E-Achieve, as you might suspect, and it'll be in your packet on Friday. Excuse me. Hawthorne STEM School. Joe wanted me to mention this publicly. Would like to encourage any parents that are interested in the STEM Magnet School or who are just curious about what it is about, to visit the Hawthorne School website to learn about the dates, some upcoming dates they have on informative sessions that they're holding for families, particularly, they want to get parents there so they understand what the kid, what the school's about and what the kids will be into. And Summit View, School of Integrated Arts Design Creativity, will be working with Madison artist Tom Sweeney, a leading, he will be leading students and artist as a profession. Several of our students will be hired to work with him and create a kinetic hanging piece of mobile. That's a, that's a kinetic hanging piece of art. You and I think of that as a mobile, right? And the Summit View educators will be presenting and partnering to participate in the American Alliance of Theater and Education National Conference. It's a mouthful, being held in Milwaukee this summer. So, again, our educators are trying to advance their profession. And that concludes my charter school report.
Thank you, Bill. We'll move on to our consent agenda, and tonight, Lori, I think we have a few gifts to report on.
We do. We have a $4,000 donation by Northwestern Mutual. That's in matching funds for, from Paul and Kathleen Olman to Les Paul Middle School, and that will be used to purchase reading materials for the students. There was a $1,000 donation to Butler by Gregory and Linda Burns, and this will be used for gifts as Christmas baskets for Butler families in need. We have a $500 donation to Whittier Elementary School, and this was from Rianne and Scott Holmes, and that will be used for class field trips. And we have two vehicles donated to North High School. We have a 2007 Toyota Sienna minivan with a Kelley Blue Book value of $4,666. It was donated by Mike and Kathy Durbin. And we have a 1999 Chevy Express van with a Kelley Blue Book value of $1,881 that was donated by Resource Management Group, and both vehicles will be used for drivability diagnosis, sorry, diagnosis, and to give students the opportunity to work on many different types of vehicles.
Nice. That's very generous of those people. Thank you for those gifts. Your agenda includes a variety of categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you'll have an opportunity for that. You'll note that there were no expulsions this past month, and at this time, if any board member would like to set aside an item for separate consideration, please indicate at this time. Okay. Steve Edlin will present the consent agenda for approval.
Thank you, Mr. President. To my fellow board members, members of the administration, members in the audience, and members at home who will be celebrating the birth of Jesus Christ, I wish you a Merry Christmas. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of one retirement, one resignation, one leave of absence, one contract, and one contract modification. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed at your desks. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Okay, is there a second to that? Second by Dr. Langill. Sue, will you call the roll?
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. It passes nine zero, Sue.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Steve. Moving on to Mr. Gray's report.
I just have one item tonight, and it's a, it's a video. It's an update on our MADE program, but I just wanted to see, this is, apparently, there's a few tweaks left to it, but this is the MADE Committee, which Amy Lang heads up. Principal Landish has been involved in it, a number of folks from, from all our high schools, but this is, this is our, I guess, our recruiting, one of our recruiting videos, and to help the community understand what we're doing.
My name is Nick Kroll, president and CEO of Aries Industries, and I want to tell you about Waukesha MADE, which is a collaboration between the Waukesha School District and manufacturers here in Waukesha County. There are many opportunities in manufacturing that are available to young people that I hope you'll consider. Career opportunities in engineering, fabrication, electronics assembly, just to name a few. Career opportunities are excellent. These are exciting, challenging opportunities, opportunities that are supported with training and skills development. So, please consider career manufacturing. Please look into Waukesha MADE and the collaboration efforts that are going on, and consider manufacturing as a career option for yourself going forward.
My name is Robert Pruce. I am the supervisor of the Service Department at Aries. Here at Aries Industries, we build and maintain equipment that does underground inspection. So, we build different transporters and cameras for different types of inspections, a different type of pipes, water pipes, gas line pipes, sewer pipes, any underground infrastructure. The kind of neat thing about it is it's a different kind of product you've never seen before, and it's interesting and fun. We also fabricate trucks from the start to finish. The trucks come in as an empty box truck. We do trailers and vans as well. By the time it's done, it's a mobile office, so it comes in, we put in walls and floors and generators and the equipment to do the inspection. And it's, every truck's different, so you're never doing the same thing twice. And in our manufacturing side of it, we actually make the equipment that goes into the trucks. So, we make the cameras, we make the tractors, the transporters, we make the controllers, all the electronics is all handmade by us. And one technician isn't doing the same thing over and over again. They can be doing different types of projects, moving from bench to bench, generally making the product from start to finish themselves, so they're not making one thing over and over again, which is pretty neat. We also deal with service and repair, so we repair our own products. So, here at Aries, we actually make the product and sell it. We don't actually use it ourselves.
Metal Tech International helps supply leading international companies with high-quality castings and metals. Metal Tech recognizes the value of each individual's contribution to the success of our team. We succeed when our employees succeed by offering an environment where people can realize their true potential and feel they are a vital part of Metal Tech's achievements. Our manufacturing facility needs dedicated and hard-working, skilled and semi-skilled employees. Success in these jobs, combined with continued educational effort, can lead to further opportunities within the company.
Surprise! I bet you didn't think there was a woman under this welding helmet.
Surprise, I bet you didn't think there was a woman under this welding helmet. My sister Judy and I own and run Duco. We're a manufacturing company in Waukesha where we build trucks and we would love for you to come work for us. Anywhere on the shop floor, to in the office, to out in sales. Come check us out, we're Duco.
We are part of the manufacturing community in Waukesha County and we want you to be a part of our team. We do things like build trucks for We Energies, one of our best customers and what helps to keep the lights on in your neighborhood, in your areas. We want you to be a part of our team. We build things and we make things and we are passionate about it, such like We Energies. We build trucks for them to help support the community and keep the lights on. So if you want to make a difference, come be a part of our team.
Hi, welcome to Hydrothermal. My name is Bill Rheingans and I'm in charge of the quality, safety and process improvement here. Hydrothermal just celebrated its eightieth year anniversary and we're a provider for steam injection heaters and currently we're at the Waukesha location. We have about 67 employees, both office and also the factory, so. Well, the apprenticeship program here at Hydrothermal started a few years ago and it affords the opportunity for the high schools to get involved and get the exposure of manufacturing. And we at Hydrothermal had a couple of them in the last couple of years that have been very successful. It also gives them a choice of whether they want to go to a tech school or a four-year college, it gives them the actual hands-on experience for the individual. Well, manufacturing recently, especially in the Waukesha area, has been growing and we've been finding out that there's a lot of skillset shortages in this area, so it's a good opportunity for manufacturing plans to, or manufacturing companies to get out to different schools and sort of show their product and see if there's anybody that would fit in those different career fields for us.
Hi, I'm Tim Burry, I work at Weldall Manufacturing Incorporated. I went to Waukesha West High School and graduated in 2013.
My name is Chris Rocha and I go to school at Waukesha South High School.
I've always been a hands-on person, I used to be really into cars. I was actually planning on going to college for auto mechanics and all that, but kind of changed up when I started taking welding last year in my high school, just last year. And it's just kind of taken off, kind of picked up on it really fast.
When I was in high school, my teacher got us, took us on some tours here at Weldall and Weldall showed us everything in their shop and I thought it was really cool how large the weldings were here and the type of welding that they did. The quality of the welding is very high and the testing that they do on it.
Thing that interests me the most is that in manufacturing, you actually build things that pertain to the real world, so you're doing something that affects pretty much everything around you.
We have really, really cool projects, like we're just finishing up a 200-foot gantry crane and pretty soon we'll be doing a 300-foot.
I really enjoy doing different things every day. We get to work on a variety of different projects and they all require different types of weldings. The people we work with know a lot of different things and they're great people to work with. It's a fun and enjoyable environment.
With your plans change, you know, one second will be this, next second will be that, but it's kind of exciting because it keeps you on the toes.
The people in the work were as smart as they were and the jobs were as good as they were. You can support a family off of a manufacturing job, which I did not realize before. And it takes a lot of math skills and engineering skills and things like that to work in a welding shop.
I know the things that I learned here will actually apply to what I'm going to be going into in the future.
I'm really glad I got interested in it and that I came here on a tour when I was in high school.
So if students have been watching this video and seeing things that are interesting to them or are curious about, first step would be to see their counselor. There are a lot of different avenues to get involved in any of these programs. The programs in general would be youth apprenticeship, co-op, youth options, dual enrollment program and maybe a few tweaks on any one of those, so that's why it's really key for students to make an appointment with their counselor and possibly bring a parent or guardian in with them so that they can sit down and talk about all these options. Another way to go about it is to talk with our technology education teacher, whether it's their woods metal fab teacher, Mr. Schradl who's in charge of the youth apprenticeship program, any of us can help guide you to the next steps that possibly would be a good for you.
Todd, you've come a long ways, you've really polished your presentation.
I know. First time I've done video. But thanks to, you know, a number of our staff, Mike Mueller you saw from, from West would participated in the development of this, this video, but I think it's, it's a nice opportunity to attract kids into our program and as you know, one of our goals is to, to work on the skills gap in Waukesha County because we do have great opportunities here and that is, that is going to be one of our focuses at our high schools to continue this program.
Mr. Baumgart?
Yeah, this is some more evidence of the wonderful partnerships that we've been able to develop here in, in the manufacturing world itself. And in fact, Hydrothermal was in there and this Friday, our engineering students will be going over to Hydrothermal and making a presentation to them on something that they have basically been designing and building for Hydrothermal to use in their manufacturing process, so it just keeps going on and on and better and better, so another good partnership thing. Thank you.
Dr. Langel?
Thank you. Todd, I think maybe you have done this, but I think it would be great to have this shown at like a chamber meeting because I can think of a number of companies.
The chamber actually is participating in this, so.
Yeah, but I can think of a lot of companies that really would probably want to jump on board that are amazing Waukesha companies that aren't there but might really want to become part of this.
Actually, there are a lot that are participating, though this particular group has been with the, the alliance, it's been developing this for longer than others, but there are others who are interested. And Mary Bear from Waukesha County Business Alliance has been a, a strong partner in this and so we have, we have, I, I'm on the, the alliance board and they've given me opportunity to present these things.
Do you know if Oberlin's on board yet?
I, I don't know, but I can.
Oh, okay. I just think there's some great ones, Oberlin.
Yes.
I've been learning a lot about them, they're amazing.
Yeah, they could, right.
Maybe they are then.
There's, there's quite a few others who are involved but weren't on this video.
Great, great, very good.
Yeah, I had, I had received a call a few weeks ago from a hydraulic repair company in the area and I referred this particular owner of this, this business over to Amy, Amy Lang. And I'll tell you, once this owner found out about this, it was just, it, he, first of all, he said, well, this is a, a really good secret that hasn't gotten out and we're saying, we're trying, we're trying to get word out as best as we can. And it really, it really was an exciting conversation to have with this particular owner and to open his eyes to what we're doing over at North and so let's keep the momentum going. How is this being distributed and?
I, it just, it just came to me today, so I haven't had a chance to work with the folks, I haven't had a chance to meet with Amy on it as, as to how it's going to be used, but I think, I know it'll be used in the high schools and whether it gets used in the public or how it gets used, I'm not sure at this point.
Okay. Well, we have to figure out a good distribution and access plan there, so. Fantastic. Anything else, Todd, in your report?
Uh, just, I, a reminder, if you, if you can make it to South High on December 19th, they have the most wonderful Christmas concert. I believe it starts at 9:15, which is an awkward time for, for many people, but it's still good if you can, if you can make it there, it's, it's well worth it, so.
Right, okay. Thank you, Todd. Now's the time where we move into our committee reports and we do rotate who gets to go first and first at bat this month is the Technology Committee, given by Patrick McCaffrey.
I have no report this month.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. We'll move on to Finance and Facilities Committee, given by Mr. O'Brien.
Well, although I'm not going first, I'll, I'll proceed anyway. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You can be first.
Yeah. We have, I believe, one action item and two information items to discuss tonight. First action item was approval of the lease of equipment with Apple Inc. Ms. Clifton presented an Apple lease purchase agreement to fund the final round of student devices for our Wave Four and Five schools and replace 85 teacher devices for West High School. The majority of the purchase, $510,000 or 61%, is being paid as a down payment with the balance of $318,851 being financed over two years. The interest rate is 1.2%. The devices being replaced will be sold and the proceeds are being applied to the initial down payment. I move to approve the lease purchase of Apple Inc. pursuant to Schedule Number Four dated December 29th, 2014, to the master lease purchase agreement dated June 5th, 2012 in an amount not to exceed $828,852. I so moved.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion. Mr. McCaffrey?
Just, just so everybody is, is aware of this purchase, this is going to be replacing some devices that were purchased before the Waukesha One program. It was, this is the pilot program that we ran at West, kind of to feel out where we wanted to go with the devices and whatnot. That was three years ago and we are upgrading those devices to fit into the Waukesha One program, so there's a seamless transition over.
And this is, this is the final waves, right? And so we will.
The final two waves.
Final two waves, so everyone will have a device in their hand by when these waves are completed.
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, as Mr. Cuomo mentioned, the meeting went longer than it should have because I guess I talked too long on Monday night. One of the topics that came up in this particular action item was maybe it'd be a good idea to, for the whole board to get a brief update at some point in time where we sit with our application of apples, what grade levels are using them, how they're being used, just a short report.
Well, actually.
Rather than a work session.
Well, we're actually envisioning a much larger report and, and we would like to get feedback from all the schools, both in terms of, of, you know, some parent feedback, some teacher feedback and student feedback and, and provide a, I mean, we can summarize that report, but we'd like to provide detail also so the board can see, you know, what, how it's looking out there.
Mr. O'Brien?
So one of the things, when I had the opportunity to meet systems this weekend, a lot of them asked questions about the iPad and the use of iPads, at what grade levels they're being used, how they're being used, so I think it'd probably be a good idea so that all board members are pretty well conversant in the topic since it does gather attention now and then, so.
Yeah, and it, and this is, this is a very important program that we have, it's been around now for a few years and it's time to really start to take a peek at how well it's doing and, and so it's really appropriate to get, get, get a fair amount of feedback from all stakeholders.
Right.
And see where we'll go. Always looking to improve.
Definitely.
Mr. Edlin?
Thank you. I think it's real important that to, especially to our parents, that I want to make sure that we're not going to have filtered feedback. I don't want to hear just the positives, I want to hear the negatives too. I want to make sure that parents who are having issues, which I've heard from quite a few, that, you know, we can, we can learn from that, we can use it as a constructive criticism to be able to.
Oh yeah, I would, I mean, that, those are the important pieces to me as well, I mean, because again, you don't, you don't grow, you don't get better unless you realize there's some hurdles you have to get over, so, so I, I, you know, my instructions to the developers of the report or the principals, if they're going to be, you know, polling parents is to get both sides of the story.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, we're looking to approve the Apple lease on this vote, is everyone clear on that? Sue, why don't we take the roll call?
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Ellen Langel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Joseph Cuomo.
Aye. It passes nine zeros, Sue. Mr. O'Brien?
I'm off to a good start, a nine zero vote.
Is that your first?
You want us to fix that, we will.
Well, we'll just move right on to information items before anyone changes their mind. The first information item is the monthly budget report. The committee received the monthly budget report for activity through November 2014. $583,000, zero, three zero dollars was reported in the general fund revenue and $9,706,993 was expended during the month. $1,185,548 was reported in special education revenue and $2.263130, $2,263,130 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projection. You notice in those numbers, we're spending a lot more than we're taking in this time of year and that's just the norm, we'll take in more after December, obviously, when collections come in. The next information item is our board budget calendar for 2015, 2016. Every year we have our budget calendars submitted. Ms. Clifton shared a timeline for the development of the 2015-16 budget that runs through October of 2015, like it does every year. It follows similar timelines from past years and has a public hearing scheduled for August 2015, so any expenditures that we'll be making, that's the time to object to them and request any changes. There were no discussion items for tonight's report and Mr. President, that does conclude my report.
Well, thank you, Mr. O'Brien, I'm going to add one or two sentences to it though, just to extend it out a little bit. This is, this is, I'm sorry, Dr. Langel?
I guess he said I can.
Who?
Ask a question.
Oh, you can ask any question you want.
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
I was just trying to listen to my friend here. Okay, just a quick one, Kurt. As I look through, you know, the building and the land and see some real familiar names in terms of farm and building, so maybe ask you or Todd, just quickly, as we go forward, it says we need a plan, are we formulating a sale plan?
For the surplus property?
Right, especially the.
Well, I, you know, I think first.
Because that's right on the interstate, we always thought that was.
There's a couple of things we have to do, number one, get Kurt.
This isn't agendized for discussion?
No, okay.
Okay, so I can't ask a question?
We'll, we'll have information for you.
Excuse me, point of order though, I mean, it is my report and it was part of the committee, I don't think it can't not be asked.
But it's not on the agenda.
And we've, we're going to have to take a step back here. We've had this issue with other committees too and technically we cannot discuss items that are not agendized and.
Okay, you're correct, no problem.
And so what, what I'm going to ask each chairperson is that when you put together your agenda for your committee meeting, you also put together the agenda for the board meeting and at that time, if there are any, so, so not all things make it to the full board meeting. Don't assume that they're going to be on the full board meeting agenda. And that was something that Mrs. Brusink and I and Ryan had to work through a little bit and so technically we can't talk on that particular issue tonight. What I would suggest, Dr. Langel, is that, I mean, you talk, talk to myself and or Mr. O'Brien on that particular.
Well, I'm happy to do so, but as a point of order, I think going forward, I hate to see things cut off, so we might want to err on the side of putting them under discussion.
Sure.
On committee meetings, we discuss anything, whether it's information or not.
Well, let me give you, let me give you an example. For CNI, CNI is in charge of approving, approving. Approving the trips, overnight trips. That is something that, that does not come forward to the full board, okay, we don't discuss those.
But it's an action item at the.
It is an action item at the committee level, okay? So there are technically some issues, some items for each committee that could be discussed and not brought forward to the full board meeting. So all I'm asking is, as part of our procedure, is as chair, as chairperson, you also should be approving what is agendized at the full board meeting. Now, let me suggest that if it's, if you've talked to the administrator that you're working with, you should, and you want to assume that everything that is on the agenda at the committee meeting should be transferred over to the board meeting, that's how you can handle that, so. Mr. Baumgart?
There's another element that can be used. We all receive the committee reports and we receive the full board agenda a week in advance, roughly a week in advance. I guess if we see something on the board meeting that is not up for discussion, but it was at a committee meeting, we can still, we could take action as a board member to have that possibly brought up at the board meeting by having the agenda. have that possibly brought up at the board meeting by having the agenda changed. Yeah, we have-
That is correct and it needs to be changed twenty-four hours in advance so that we post it properly. Now, with that said, I'm going to turn to Mr. Gray and Ms. Madden as our parliamentarians. Is there any way that we can talk on this particular item right now that, that Dr. Langel brought up? I think technically, we can't, but I might be wrong.
Well, my, my only concern is that, I mean, even though it was noticed as a separate item on FNF Committee, it was not necessarily separated on, on the board agenda. And I know, two meetings ago, we cut off Mrs. Brzink who wanted to discuss something from CNI because it wasn't noticed. So, if nothing else, for consistency's sake, I would, I would say that, you know, I can provide an update in Friday's, I, I know what the question is, so I can provide an update and we will be talking about more of this in the future, there's a lot more work has to be done on it, so.
Mr. O'Brien?
I, okay, I'm sure you guys have studied this thoroughly, but even the discussion we're having isn't on the agenda.
That's right.
Okay? If we're going to be, if we're going to be real sticklers about it, then why are we having this discussion?
Touche, Mr. O'Brien, touche.
Yep.
Mr. Edlin?
I think it's important to have the discussion because it's a matter of state law of what was properly posted. But on our information sheets, it was Xed off that this was a committee discussion item and not a board discussion item, in addition to the agenda.
So, so perhaps what, what we'll do is, Todd and I will work on some clarification there and I'm just going to ask that, you know, each of the chairpeople of each committee make sure that you're looking at both, both agendas closely.
Point of order, so therefore, I really think I can ask this and I won't ask anymore about that, but I do think, and I understand what we're saying in terms of, you know, Robert's Rules and state rules and so forth, but, you know, as we look ahead to CNI, what we're saying is that this board cannot engage in any discussion on grading for learning, but we can discuss the other five things. And I think we have to be real careful with this because we're going to cut off some stuff if we don't really watch this carefully. That's all I want to say, just a point of order.
Well, I do-
But I think it's kind of crazy.
I do think there is a difference between whether it's on the agenda or not, though, too.
No, but these are on the agenda. I'm just saying, if it's under discussion, you're saying we can ask questions and discuss. If it's under information, you're saying no discussion, no questions, nothing.
If-
Okay.
If we wanted to follow the exact rule of order, what I-
Thing we do.
Well, with respect to it being on the agenda, the item that you wanted to discuss was not agendized tonight, so, but these other items are at least agendized. That's the difference, Dr. Langel.
Okay, so you don't care whether it's listed as information or discussion, is what you're saying?
Well, we, we haven't-
We need to be clear about that.
Our past practice is that we haven't followed that rule to a T.
No, we haven't.
We haven't.
We haven't followed that rule to a T, but what we have followed to a T, for the most part, is if it's not on the agenda, we don't talk about it, for the most part, so we have had exceptions.
If it's part of the report, okay.
And I just, we were trying to work really hard over the last month or so to try and, try and make sure that they match, so.
Thank you.
We will move on and I will try and provide some clarity in our Friday update. We'll move on to the curriculum instruction committee report given by Barbara Brzink.
Thank you, Mr. Cuomo. Dr. Langel, for your information, you know, I had the same question about the CNI report because, you know, we had a very, very heavy agenda this last month and we had a very, very long meeting.
Let's just move on.
Okay, well, anyway, presentation items are not, just not listed, but everything else is. So, here's my report. The curriculum instruction meeting was held on Tuesday, December second, at six o'clock. This evening, we have one action item and a few discussion items that appear on the agenda for curriculum instruction. The first action item has to do with the ACT prep course. On a vote of five to zero, the CNI committee approved offering the ACT prep course as a pilot course at North High School for the second semester of the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school year and implementing it for all three high schools in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. Mr. President, I now request barver pool and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Langel. Discussion?
Okay.
Mr. Edlin?
I'll go second.
Under the financial impact, it says course fee of twenty-six dollars, twenty-three cents covers the ACT online prep. Is that a fee to be charged to the student?
Yes.
Unless, unless the free and reduce kicks in and then we cover it.
Okay. Are we considering expand, expanding this program to other schools?
I would, I would, I would like to see this at all our high, high schools because starting this spring, all students have to take the ACT. Previous to this, it was, I think we were somewhere between fifty-seven to sixty percent of students were taking it across the district and now with a hundred percent taking it, it will have a definite impact on our average ACT score and I think we need to do everything we can to prepare all students to do well on it.
Who covers that cost?
I believe it's the state. I, I, you know, it's, it's in lieu of some of their other state tests, so I'm assuming they're just transferring money from one testing account to another, but we've not been, been invoiced or told what any kind of cost would be at this point, so, thank you.
Dr. Langel?
Well, I was just going to actually quickly mention on our committee discussion, which we did discuss it, we ask, and I think Jody Landish had said and, and also our leader had said, the intent is to expand this to all three high schools, so, absolutely.
Right. Okay, on a vote of five to zero, the CNI committee approved to offer an ACT prep course for an elective one-half credit.
We're, we're still-
Oh, we didn't take the vote.
Yeah, we're still on the first item. Is there any other discussion on, we're looking at the ACT prep course that is, Bet North is asking to move forward with. Mr. Edlin?
This is a point of order, this is, again, on the sheet, the committee sheet, it's not checked off as a board action, even though it's agendized as such.
But it was agendized on the board, on the full board.
Right. I guess I'm trying to say-
I think we need to tidy up a number of things with respect to this.
We do. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? All right, so we're looking to approve the ACT prep course for Waukesha North High School. Will you take that vote, Sue?
Ellen Langel.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Cuomo.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Barb?
Thank you. Anyway, it, the course will be an elective one-half credit starting in the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year. Next item is grading for learning. In response to committee questions following the November fourth, CNI committee meeting, grading for learning coordinator Jason Smith provided us with additional documents and resources to provide better clarity around grading for learning. As a committee, we agree a work session may be helpful to continue our depth of knowledge as it relates to grading for learning. Personalized learning update followed. Assistant Superintendent Ryan Crone invited both the Flight Academy and Quest Academy to share the successes that they have had in their classrooms, as well as the challenges that they have faced since implementation. Additionally, Jody Landish, principal of North High School, presented their concept of Inspire. We will hear more about Inspire in the coming months. Align by Design update. Beginning in two thousand and ten, the school district of Waukesha embraced the Align by Design model for English, Social Studies, and Science at the high school level. This is the third year of implementation for Science at North, South, and West High Schools, but this is the first year of implementation for English and Social Studies at the high school. A fantastic team shared the progress being made in the Align by Design model in the Humanities, English, and Social Studies, and Science, as well as outlined future considerations for our high school programs in these area. We had a dual-language update next. The Regional Service Model. Five years ago, the district of Waukesha transitioned a variety of bilingual service models into one research-based model called Dual Language. These students will enter Dual Language Sixth Grade in the fall of two thousand and sixteen. To better understand and act upon the impact of Dual Language, Bilingual Regional Services Area, Dual Language Coordinator Dee Garcia began a conversation with hopes to prepare us for future discussion about development of the Dual Language program by site at the elementary and middle school levels and strategic planning of the convergence of Dual Language two-way at these cohorts grow into the middle and secondary levels. We look forward to more conversations regarding this topic and are hopeful to host a board work session to dig deeper into what it is we, as a district, need to do. Additionally, Dee also invited the board to the See It Live sessions on January thirtieth from nine AM to two PM. Additional information will be coming. Abeyance Program. Assistant Superintendent Joe Cook and Principal Sharon Thede presented a recommendation to implement an expulsion abeyance program to support the high schools and students. By providing an expulsion abeyance program, students are able to continue their education in an alternative setting without having an expulsion on their record and still have the opportunity to work through the support and other additional requirements to return to their high school. At this time, if you have any questions, Joe Cook is here and could answer any questions you may have. Harvey Phillip name change. Sharon Thede, principal of Harvey Phillip, informed the CNI committee of the work that she, along with the Harvey Phillip Governance Board, have done around the recommendation of a name change for the Harvey Phillip program. After the move to the new building, staff brainstormed over twenty names. At a faculty meeting, staff narrowed it down to four choices. We allowed students to vote and the winning name was Waukesha East Alternative High School. Renaming has been investigated at every level and does not need full board approval. Again, if you have any additional questions, Joe Cook will be able to answer them. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the CNI committee report and our next meeting will be held Tuesday, January sixth. Thank you.
Now, we, we went through those discussion items pretty quickly. I'm going to just kind of slow down and see if there is any further discussion on any of those five items, so. Mr. Edlin?
Is Mr. Cook taking questions this evening for the board?
Oh, sure.
Okay. On the abeyance program, is the recommendation that this would happen before it would, before any action would come before an expulsion hearing or after?
If, if there was a, a major offense, if we were to break major offenses down into something that would be a significant offense, such as a major fight, harm to another student or staff member, we would look at that as one tier of offense and we would look at other offenses that would have been perhaps considered for expulsion in the past. This would be a, a vehicle to continue students through their education without having a formal expulsion on their record. It would go through the pre-expulsion process that the district has currently used and it would be an, an alternative placement within the district outside of the school for a period of time to assist students in their education, to provide substantial discipline to the student without going down the road of expulsion.
Okay. I, um, it, in my opinion, this is going to create a big gray area on what some people might consider to be an expulsional, an offense that would lead to an expulsion and may not ever appear before an expulsion panel. And I want to, you know, try to eliminate having that kind of gray area, so I'm going to ask that you come up with a list of possible offenses that would lead to that level so that we don't have this judgment area to where you have board members later on going, what the heck? You know, we want to make sure that, you know, some parents are really concerned about a certain action that took place, that we don't have to answer to it, we don't know anything about it. So, I'd just like a little bit more definition than, than this not coming up to the board level and maybe it should have, maybe it shouldn't have, but, you know, that's something for us to decide as, as an expulsion panel. That's why we convene. We, we make the judgment on what's to happen to that student. And in the past, we have, you know, often given great weight to allowing a student to continue their education, whether the expulsion is on the record or not, you know, sometimes we have to act in, in the best interest of what we perceive as the community and, and other students, too.
One of the, the issues that this program was, is aiming to address is how those services are continued to be provided to students. In the past, for many of our students, we have expelled with educational services. We've continued on at library sites, at, at other community areas so that the student could continue in their education. By going down this road, we're requiring the students come to us outside of what would be school hours so that they could get their courses. We have had to deal with issues of no-shows in the past where we're compensating staff members to go to the library and not work with, not work with the student who's showing up there. We're, we're trying to, again, concentrate these students to one location. To address the, the specific offenses, I, I would ask that maybe we would go back to the curriculum committee to, to talk a little bit about that, only because some of the offenses that would be listed may somehow be identifiable, just given the few instances that we would have occurrences in the district. We wouldn't want people to be able to peg that this student did this and this was the consequence. The student who committed the offense still does have some protections.
Correct. Okay. I, I would have thought that the plan was already in place because we haven't had one expulsion hearing yet this year. It's been wonderful.
Yeah, it's pretty, that's rare, right?
Knock on wood, Edlin.
That's good. Mr. O'Brien?
Well, I've only attended one expulsion since I've joined the board and I think this program is needed, given the nature of some of the changes that was made in the expulsion policy since I left. From what I could tell, the program went to a very, very little discretion. You know, if you're before an expulsion panel, you, at this point in time, if you receive an expulsion order, there weren't the opportunity for really to help the kid like there used to be. And this abeyance plan provides that opportunity for the administration to do that rather than bringing it to the board and with less flexibility than what we had in the past. And that change of flexibility was a board decision, but I think it was a little punitive and took away the opportunity to help, help kids, which I always thought expulsion panels, a big part of that was, I think every board member looked at as an opportunity to give a kid one last chance, if we could, and give the administration more authority to deal with the child going forward if there was an additional violation. And sometimes it was immediate expulsion, depending upon the circumstances. So, since we changed that, I think this abeyance program is a, is a good alternative improvement to what we used, what we're doing today and it kind of goes back to what we used to do, but it doesn't require the board to meet as, as often. And I think it's a great idea and I'm, I'm glad the administration came up with it without being pushed and that's great.
Yeah, and I, I'd like to add, I mean, if, if the student doesn't complete the program, you still may see him, you know, I mean, that's, that's still the, the situation is if they agree to go in and they don't complete the, the, the work and so on that they have to do as part of the pre-expulsion order, then you still may, the panel still may see the student.
There's, there always has been judgment calls that our administrators have had to make as to what to bring up to the expulsion level and what not to, and how to deal with each disciplinary situation. Sometimes there's the, the private, or the contracts that are created between administration and the student, you know, where they have, they've, they've, they've done something that requires disciplinary action, but it wasn't necessarily at the level to bring it to the full board, so this kind of expands that portion is kind of the, the way I look at it and it gives another tool to the administrators for consideration in that whole disciplinary process. Dr. Langel?
Well, I think in the discussion that we had, which was a good one, I think we've all agreed that the semantics of it were really very gray area, very bad, because in all the years I've done it, and many of you have done it longer than I have, we'd say, you're under an expulsion order, but really, the student was in a sense suspended. And then if they didn't abide by their, you know, program, then they would come back and, and they would be out. And so, I think that really the use of the word expulsion in that case was really not right, because as we know in neighboring districts, if you're expelled, you're gone.
You're gone.
And so this really clears it up, I think, for both the students, the families, and us. And again, I mean, we could still expel, but this, under this rubric, if we mean expel, we mean expel. And I think that's really good. I mean, it's very clear now that we, what we mean. Yeah.
All right. Any other items that, uh, on Barbara's, uh, from Barbara's report that were discussion items that we wanted to discuss? Mr. O'Brien?
I assume the kids were involved in that.
Oh, yes.
That was very clever, and, uh, and they're to be congratulated.
I think, Joe, I don't know if you mentioned this, uh, or previously it was mentioned, it was, like, the kids voted two to one, I guess, for East, compared to things like, oh, remember where it sits, Riverview and River Edge, and some of those things which were becoming too common in the city of Waukesha, and they just liked this idea. The other element with using the word East is it's not quite as, it's more like a regular high school. And again, as I mentioned at the last meeting, it's very important for the kids that are involved with this program to not be viewing it as prison of some kind. And, and they were very, very, the kids are very receptive and, and supportive of this idea, and even the little, uh, education alternative setting, something like that.
And it is two blocks east of South.
It is truly...
I measured it, it's on...
Technically east, yes.
Is that really only one that's geographically correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. O'Brien?
I'd just like to, you know, since its name is changing, um, I think we should recognize Harvey Phillips. I believe it was our first charter school of, of all of them, as I recall. And that's, it was our very first charter school. So we're losing a legacy when we dropped the Harvey Phillips name to a certain extent, but, um, it's actually been a very successful charter school. Our graduation rates, uh, have been, uh, the admiration of the state here in Waukesha. It was a program that many times people said that we had normally put on the cutting block, except for No Child Left Behind certainly made that almost impossible because those children would be left behind if we'd eliminated the Harvey Phillips program. So it's, it's probably the longest charter school we had, and I can't say it's the most successful because that would offend some of the other charter schools, but it has been a good program. When I talk about, uh, expulsions, as I recall, there's been virtually, I wouldn't say zero, but very close, very close to zero. I, uh, you know, if there was, it was coincidental. It's like collateral from one of the other schools. And, uh, the success rate of those children is quite high. And I think without high school diplomas, uh, the statistics are a little bit more bleak for, for kids. So that board that established that charter school way back, they deserve a pat on the back. And I think, uh, the district as a whole deserves a pat on the back for continuing all these years.
It's a, it's a name change, not a program change, really, so. Mrs. Brzink?
Yes, I would just like to clarify how they came about the name. Think of education, E, is an alternative, A, to, an alternative, setting. And that's where the S-T comes from, S-T. So, education and an alternative setting. I like that.
All right. Any other discussion on the CNI items? Okay, Barb, thank you for...
Thank you, Mr. Como.
For that report.
Thank you, Mr. Como.
We'll move on to, uh, our Human Resource Committee, presented by Mr. Edlin.
I have no report this evening. Thank you very much.
And we'll move on. We'll actually, our last committee meeting tonight is the Policy Committee, uh, given by Pat Madden.
We will have a meeting in December 16.
Sixteen.
Six, 16:00.
Okay.
It's our next meeting.
Thank, thank you, Pat, and at this time, there is no other business. And, Mr. Gray, do we have a need for an executive session?
We do not, and we're not noticed for one as well.
All right, okay. Thank you, everyone, everybody. Uh, the meeting's adjourned.